Testing one, two, three. Testing one, two. Here we go. Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'll ask Pastor Fair to lead us in our prayer. And I've got two special guests, Ms. McKenzie Behringer and Ms. Ellie Mayo. Ladies, after we do our prayer, if you'll help us in the pledge.
You pray with me. God, we do thank you so much for today. We thank you for the blessings of life that you've given us and bringing us to this point. We just ask now that, God, you grant us wisdom. God, you give us vision for this city. I pray for each and every person that sits on this council, God, and our mayor here. I pray for everyone in attendance tonight that should bless the homes, God, and do what we should do as a city in everything that we do and say here, God, but lead us into your hand. We ask all this in Christ's name. Amen.
Mr. Swan, call roll, please. Here.
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 Good evening. Walter, if you will, please come up. Walter Turner is always faithful to be here to represent our veterans, and we appreciate the job that you do and as far as all of our veterans, especially in these days that we live in. Whereas no one left behind is one of many mottos that refer to the efforts of the Department of Defense to recover those who became missing while serving our nation. And whereas their mission is to provide the fullest possible accounting of their personnel to the families and to the nation. And whereas between World War II and more recent conflicts, more than eighty-three thousand Americans are missing and unaccounted for. And whereas we will never forget their ultimate sacrifice, nor will we ever abandon our responsibility to do everything in our power to bring them home. And whereas the first commemoration of POW MIA's was July eighteenth, nineteen seventy-nine. And whereas in nineteen eighty-six, the third Friday in September became the National Day of Observance for POW MIA's. And whereas POW MIA Recognition Day is a day of remembrance and hope for the speedy and safe return of American prisoners of war and those still missing in action. Now therefore, I Bobby Hernan, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Northport, Alabama, do hereby proclaim Friday, September sixteenth, twenty sixteen, to be POW MIA Recognition Day in the city of Northport and encourage our citizens to remember our missing soldiers and those held as prisoners of war. Thank you, Walter, for everything you do.
Maybe I can get through this. Thank you, Mayor Hernan, and council members. I'm honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of the men and women who have served and sacrificed to keep America free, those former POWs and the over eighty thousand families of the over eighty thousand that remain missing. As Americans, let us all recommit ourselves to remaining strong in our devotion to the principles of which so many courageously fought and sacrificed. On sixteenth September, two thousand and sixteen, let us take pause and remember those who put country before self and did not return home to their families. Let us remember the families of the missing who continue to burn the candle of hope. And let us continue to tell America the story that without the service and sacrifice of the American servicemen and servicewoman, they would not have been the United States of America. May God bless our former prisoners of war. May God bless the memory of the missing and their families. And may God keep our men and women in uniform safe and their families strong. And may God continue to bless the United States of America. On Friday, the sixteenth of September, at two o'clock, VFW Post six oh two-two, we're gonna have a formal POW MIA Recognition Day ceremony. I invite all of you to attend. If you've never witnessed a ceremony like this, I will guarantee you, you will never forget it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. What I'll do, ladies and gentlemen, I will jump forward a little bit under presentations. Gary Minor with Tuskegee County Park Recreation is here with his staff, of course. Ms. Sam Fawcett, former mayor, he's here. He's not running. But good folks at PARA. Good folks at PARA has a great presentation for us, so Gary, we'll let you have the floor.
Thank you for having me. Appreciate Sam being here. Sam's your representative on the APARA board, and he supports everything we do at PARA, so thank y'all for having him as our representative. We've got a little presentation we'd like to show you. We've been kinda, for the last year, we've been saying, how can we be more helpful to Northport? And, you know, I've heard it from some of the elected officials, too, you know, PARA, we'd like for you to be more helpful to Northport. So we thought, well, look, we'll get together as a staff and talk about ideas and put something out there that might fit in with some of your ideas, some of the elected leaders' ideas for the future. So we wanted to kinda put some stuff out there and see if this, any of these things appeal to you. We, you know, really what we want to do is we want to be involved with making Northport a great place to live. And this is kind of our first attempt at showing some ideas, and we'd like your feedback in the future. But right now, we're just gonna throw out some ideas, and if you have any questions, please ask me. Start with Vandegrift Park, which I guess anybody hasn't seen in the paper. And, you know, Rustic Park opens in Northport, which we know is technically not in the city limits of Northport. It borders Northport, but Northport will be a great beneficiary of this park. As the people who come and stay here and use the park will also shop in downtown Northport and go and eat in downtown Northport. We've got a small video here, which, to show the interest, you know, today's millennials, the younger folks, they want to live in downtown areas. And they want parks that are, you know, used to, a lot of us live out in rural areas, and so we didn't go spend our spare time in kind of nature parks. Well, now it's starting to turn the other way. People are wanting to live downtown, but they want to be connected with nature. And this park is really close to the town of Northport, and it's a great place to be in the nature, kind of in the middle of the city. And this, to show how things work, social media, this little video has over fifty thousand views already.
... Historic Bridge Park, which is the first nature park of its kind for PARA. Park amenities include RV campsites with grills and drinkable water and six semi-permitive tent sites. You may rent kayaks or canoes to enjoy our thirty-three acres of multiple open freshwater ponds. This unique wetland ecosystem combines aspects of land and water to create a distinctive habitat where certain plant and animal species are protected and can flourish. The most notable historical feature of the park is a single span of the eighteen eighty-two King Bowstring Bridge. It is one of the four spans that crossed the Black Warrior River from eighteen eighty-two to eighteen ninety-six. For rental and a complete list of our amenities, visit tcpara.org.
I'd like to thank also the residents of Detroit, Northport, for trusting us to allow us to try to develop this park. This park is a work in progress. We have some nice areas for the public to come into. It is a lot of water with land in between, so one of our problems is trying to connect pieces of land. How do you get to the various pieces of land with the water being in the way? So we're working on that. And so here you can see a few ideas on some of the things we'd like to do in the future. You know, we've got some RV sites, some tent sites, and we're working in areas that are not actually in public view right now. If you come into the park in the main gate, you won't see everything we're doing in other areas of the park. But we're proud of what we've done so far and hope that you'll go and visit it. It's a really nice, nice park, and we think in the future, as we're able to develop that park, that it'll be a treasure for everybody. Treehouse Park is a concept for a piece of land that wouldn't necessarily be good for a football field, a baseball field, or something. It's, you wouldn't have to have flat land to do this. You can have a piece of land that's sloped heavily, or you can have wetlands and do some things with it. So this is really popular kind of out in the northwest, Oregon, Washington, in that area, and actually Atlanta is starting to develop some kind of treehouse parks in their city park system. A lot of these are just concepts, you know, and we have kinda been looking behind the scenes at potential pieces of land. We're not really ready to discuss any potential pieces of land in particular, but as we gauge your interest and get some feedback from you, we can talk about those. Obviously, pieces of land owned by the city would be nice because there's no additional expense in purchasing these types of facilities. Great Russell Park is associated with a specific area, and we think we could help to add to the extension of downtown Main Avenue and have a little place where you can have an acoustical, someone playing an acoustical instrument to the audience one night a week or one night a month, and have your food trucks still be accommodated there as well on a periodic basis, and add to some of the art that downtown Northport is kind of known for. Simpatam Park. Great park, great location. It needs a little updating. Just a few ideas to add, add some things there. Some outdoor amenities like chess tables, ping pong tables that are built for the outdoors. It needs a little playground, and we think it's a great little park and could be spruced up a little bit. I keep hearing back from a lot of the community is that, you know, we need to rebuild the Kentuck fields, or, you know, we need some baseball fields because the age and the condition of the current Kentuck field. So this is just, no specific location. If it's there, fine, or somewhere else, but just throwing out the idea of rebuilding the baseball and softball field. Same with the soccer. Soccer is a huge sport for kids now. In fact, we have about a thousand kids involved with soccer right now. And we don't have a single soccer league, so we are doing some soccer programming with kids with the Housing Authority, and we're working with kids at Kentuck Park and the grassy areas there. But this is something that you could even do, depending on what kind of land you had. You could have a baseball and soccer complex where you would host tournaments and those kind of things. So it makes it more attractive to have those kind of facilities all in one spot sometimes. Northport Community Center. It needs some improvement. Northport Community Center is extremely popular with us as far as with the public. It's constantly being used outside of our six big activity. Need some improvement. Put some art there, put a little spray feature in the grass. Playground cover it with some shade. Levy Trail, we, Levy Trail is awesome. It's, you know, you're protecting a lot of Northport and I know. To go along with Levy Trail. Cut a little bit, we, you know, few options of outdoor. Activity. So that I've been at meetings where Aldott has been, and Aldott is now forced on the federal government, two school. Maybe we could connect the loop all the way back around to eighty-two. Fairly, we have a possibility now. They are pretty ambitious on that. Building road projects, something we need to do. Possible to get some money to build. No closed equestrian facilities. Have a horse arena at Soul. Young horses have money, so they travel and they stay. I mean, in town, so. Asset Center, for Asset Center, it's one of the. Hope you, a lot of citizens, your citizens that live nearby. I got canines or, I don't know, as long as you want to make them, if you could. Talk a little bit about the power of horses to drive retail development. Building the tight spaces which. Have room in those kind of spaces. Permacam. No hope of getting permanent. Hold on, location, and just. Problem is, is it's a place for people to go read. Percent of all apparel resistance. Hold on, for the people. When out there, APARA does a lot of business with little Ford. Cause people to live. Everybody thinks, and I said, well, how did you lose? Number two answer is. Ain't well. But meditation, but it's not. But the reason that people give you, what? Look around southeast and you see.
Thank you, Gary. Hey, Mayor, Council, you guys got any questions of Gary, or?
Just a couple things real quick. I thought, thank you, Gary and Mr. Fawcett. I appreciate everything. And, you know, when I contacted Mr. Minor several, several months ago, and, you know, just said, you know, hey, it's time for Northport to provide some better opportunities for our citizens. And we kinda sat down and went through district by district. You know, every district deserves some type of park or some type of attraction for families to go to. So this is kind of what came out of that, and I'm very happy to see, see what you put together. It certainly gives us something we can look at now to start making some decisions for the future. I think the citizens certainly deserve that, and they want that, as do all of us up here. So I certainly appreciate the effort into this.
Gary, I was just wondering, are you seeing, like, these towns you mentioned, Asheville, Chattanooga? Is your role there, are they coordinating the space with private industry? Is what?
Some of each. They're, you know, they're strategically building, they're using parks recreation to help thrive the private business.
And so like, I can't help but think of the deal we went through a few months ago at the community center. You know, everybody was fired up about the, the fact that a donut shop was coming allegedly. But in my mind, why couldn't a donut shop come there and the park still thrive, you know, so that, so that. I understand. I'm just using that as an example.
If the park was bigger there, you probably wouldn't have had as many people. It would
But I mean, again, my deal is for it to work, as you have it outlined, it has to be a team effort.
Very much about public-private partnership. That's the way we can get things done. We can try to do everything ourselves. We're not gonna get everything done. You know, we can ask you to help us. We, poor private businesses, we can get involved that offers recreational opportunities to our citizens. That's for all of us.
And it takes somebody getting everybody at the table. And like down at the levee where you mentioned, to me, that's a prime example of what we could do, if you could get everybody together. But it takes somebody, perhaps you, that don't mind standing up to the people that say, no private, you know, no hot nails at the community center versus, hey, let's have hot nails and a drive-through park, or whatever. But we appreciate it, Gary. Like that wetland boardwalk, is that outrageously expensive? I mean, I do so much of the.
You know, a simple boardwalk would not be that expensive, but.
It's just such a great place out there. And that seemed like that would give people access to it.
Hey, Gary, and this is, I guess this is more of a process question. Councilman Sullivan, would you take the lead as far as getting with Gary? I guess now we're talking, maybe somebody asked the question, hey, how much does X cost? And I guess developing a cause store?
We have worked on some preliminary budget items in case we were.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't mind. I'll get together. One of the things we have done is, along with putting this together, is looking at site locations, and that becomes, that can be very difficult, depending on what you want to do. So we'll certainly be working together in the next couple of days. I'll get with you, and we'll kinda sit down and go over this again and see where we're at. So thank you for putting this together. I appreciate it.
Very good job, Gary. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Sam, you got anything? Okay. Item five, ladies and gentlemen, is approval of the agenda. You had our agenda before you in the pre-meeting. Mr. Swan gave us a brief synopsis again in our pre-meeting. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as printed. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sims. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Option carries, Mr. President. Thank you.
Item seven A one, under unfinished business, is a second reading of an ordinance amending section five eight dash three five of the municipal code pertaining to parks and recreation. Mr. Davis.
Yes, Mr. President. Let me speak to both of these together. As you know, Amy Eccles, Director of Kentuck, has requested that Kentuck be allowed to serve craft beer at the Kentuck Festival this year. These two ordinances for second reading and ready for action tonight would allow this to occur. And what it does, it allows for sale only if council approves each particular request. In other words, any request would have to come to the council for a specific vote. For example, on your agenda tonight, under eight B five, is a resolution authorizing a special permit for the Kentuck Arts Festival. And this is an example of what we are talking about. It limits the sale of alcoholic beverages only to craft beer only by a property licensed vendor. They have to follow all state and local laws, as well as all ABC regulations. And it sets the time for ten AM to four thirty PM on Saturday and noon until four thirty PM on Sunday, October the fifteenth. And if it goes well this year, and Kentuck wishes to do, again, next year, they would have to come back to the council for approval again. So this is just a one-time approval. Of the, the two ordinances, one deal with the ordinance that sets up a business license, then later on in your agenda will be a resolution allowing this to occur during this Kentuck Festival in October.
All right, thank you. I have a motion to approve that ordinance amending section five eight dash three five of the municipal code pertaining to parks and recreation.
Moved to approve.
That's a motion by Councilman Sullivan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harper. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
President Logan.
Abstain.
Option carries, Mr. President.
Second reading, second item, is an ordinance amending section six six dash two nine two of the municipal code. Mr. Davis, again, this is the second, or the second leg of the initial second reading of that first ordinance, correct?
Yes, sir. This sets out a fifty dollar license for the vendor.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve that ordinance amending section six six dash two nine two of the municipal code pertaining to special events?
Moved to approve, Mr. President.
That's a motion by Councilman Harper. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments?
This is not just specific to the parks and recreation. This is just anywhere.
Get a permit.
This is, yes, sir, this is specific to, the prohibition is in city parks. And so no one could come and ask the city council to have alcoholic beverages anywhere that the city owns without coming before the city council.
Right. I just want a clarification on that. Thank you. That's a motion by Councilman Harper, a second by Councilman Sullivan, clarification by Mayor Hernan. Any further questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Sims. President Logan.
Abstain.
Option carries, Mr. President.
New business, item eight A one, is a first reading of an ordinance ordering the demolition of an unsafe structure located at eighteen eleven Lurleen B Wallace Boulevard. Mr. Stevens, again, this is the old Chevron on nineteenth and Lurleen. Would you give us a brief update on that?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Our chief building official examined the building a few months ago, found it into a state of disrepair and in violation of the local building codes. He posted a sign on it October first, and, I'm sorry, August first, and has sent letters to the owners. It's a forty-five day process, and that'll end next Monday.
Thank you. I'll offer that for a first reading on item eight A one. Item eight B one is a resolution declaring certain items as surplus and authorizing a proper disposal. Item eight B one is a resolution declaring certain items as surplus and authorizing a proper disposal. Ms. Starnes, these are basically, items that have reached their useful life, an old mosquito sprayer, saws and weeders, correct? I'll make a motion to approve that resolution declaring certain items as surplus and oper- authorizing a proper disposal. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harper. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item two is a resolution authorizing our city administrator's office to enter into an agreement with the American Red Cross. Mr. Swan, again, this is a, this is basically a con- a continuation of a current contract that we have with the Red Cross where they have the use of the civic center, in the event of natural disasters, correct?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve that resolution authorizing the city administrator's office to enter into a shelter agreement with the American Red Cross. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harper. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you. Item three is a resolution authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with the Cassidy Company Incorporated, concerning drainage issues in the Forest Glen subdivision. Uh, Mr. Webb, can you give us a, just a brief update?
Uh, yes, our public works department received calls. We had surcharging of the storm sewers, uh, some storm sewer lids blown off. Um, they couldn't, find any local blockages or problems and, uh, we're looking to enter to a contract to try to identify the problem that occurred during the storm events.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve that resolution authorizing our city administrator's office to enter into an agreement with the Cassidy Company Incorporated, for the hydraulic review of the drainage system in Forest Glen? Again, this is, this is, would be considered an emergency, uh, resolution, so to speak. Is there a motion? Thank you. That's a motion by Councilmember Sims. Is there a second? I'll make that motion. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President. Thank you.
Item four is a resolution authorizing the city administrator's office to enter into an agreement with McGifford and Associates for professional services, pertaining to the Charlie Shirley Tank Cleaning and Painting Project. Mr. Ingram.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, Mayor, members of council. The, uh, this contract is for the engineering service portion of a maintenance project to the Shirley Tank. This project would involve the, uh, basically the complete overhaul of the tank. And this will cover through the engineering design portion through bidding and construction oversight.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the city administrator's office to execute, any requisitions pertaining to the professional engineering services of the Charlie Shirley Tank Cleaning and Painting Project?
I like that motion.
Thank you. That's a motion by Councilmember Sims. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harper. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item five is a resolution authorizing a special permit for the Kentuck Arts Festival. Mr. Davis.
Yes, sir. This is what I alluded to earlier. This is a one-time permission for this, uh, festival. And if they, this is a success and they wish to try it again, they would have to come back to this council next year.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the resolution authorizing a special permit to the Kentuck Association, to allow for the possession, sale and consumption of alcohol in a city park on October fifteenth and sixteenth? Again, this is, from ten to four thirty and from twelve to four thirty respectively. Is that right, Ron?
Yes, sir. It's craft beer only.
Alright. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. That's a motion by Councilman Sullivan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harper. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
President Logan.
Abstain.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item C is a consent agenda. We have sixteen items. They range from minutes of the previous meeting, bill listings, travel and training, P O requisitions, of course. Uh, Mr. Ingram gave us a brief synopsis from items five, six, seven, eight and nine. These are all related to, his water and sewer system improvements and or repairs, one being in particular a P O rec for a finished water valve. It's basically a check valve repair kit and a rebuild kit which will save the city, uh, some money in re- in addition to a, P O rec for a new control panel that staff is going to install to save the city some money. So again, these are sixteen items. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Sims. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you. Item nine reports of special committees to council. We only have one to report. Uh, Councilwoman Hayes, of course, is chair of our personnel committee and we met, uh, last week just to go over general, operations of our H R department and that went really well. Uh, Joseph Rose gave us an update on our city administrator in terms of, the process. Once, once the job closes, uh, once we go to civil service board and they call and, vet those applicants, it'll come to the city council, uh, for interview and of course, vote. So again, uh, that's probably up for council discussion at next council meeting or pre-meeting to determine, uh, when we have a good date, for interviews for city administrator. Again, so that, that's the only report to committee or, or of committee to council, that I have to report on behalf of Councilwoman Judy Hayes. Item ten, public hearings. We have none on the agenda. Item eleven, city administrator's business. Mr. Swan.
Oh, sir, no business.
Thank you. Item twelve, uh, departmental business under legal department. Mr. Davis, you have two claims for city council consideration.
Yes, uh, Mr. President, we went over these in detail at the pre-meeting. Uh, first is the can- the claim of Daryl and Elaine Gay, in the amount of thirteen hundred dollars and it's the recommendation of the claims committee of this amount.
Thank you. It's got a favorable recommendation by the committee in the, in the amount of thirteen hundred. Alright. I'll make a motion to approve the claim sixteen dash three two in the amount of thirteen hundred dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sims. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Ron, the second one, claim sixteen forty-seven, please give us a, an update.
Yes, sir. Again, uh, this was reviewed by the claims committee on behalf of Claude and Michelle Harris, in the amount of one thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars, uh, due flooding and, and we recommend that this be paid as well.
Alright, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the claim sixteen dash forty-seven in the amount of one thousand nine forty-five? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
There a motion? Thank you. That's a motion by Councilman Sims. Is there a second? I'll make that motion as a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Sims.
I'm sorry, Councilman Sam.
You're trying to give him the job and he ain't got but one more meeting. He ain't got more. I mean, if he wants it now, he's got one more meeting. We'll make that happen. We're good. Come on.
I apologize for that.
That's alright.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you. Item thirteen is public comment. Gary, we got you hooked up on the initial one early on in the agenda. We have one citizen signed up to speak, uh, Mr. Jody Jobson. Good evening, Mr. Jobson. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jody Jobson. I live in fifteen thirty-four Bellwood Lane in Northport. And before I carry on where I came to, I want to thank Mr. Minor and Para because, i- if you gentlemen sitting behind that desk don't open your eyes and see that are the ones that's been elected, don't see what it can do for Northport, then we can find some eye doctors or something. You talking about revenue. Now, I got a grandson playing. He goes to South Haven, Mississippi. Started in a cornfield. And now, I think the mayor up there comes out every weekend. They play fifty-one out of fifty-two weeks of the year, on a travel ball team that they come from all over. Once they built those fields, once they got recreation started, the motels came, the restaurants came, the whole area. So between forty and sixty percent of their income on sales tax and all that comes from that ballpark. And that could be right here in Northport. You've got people today that are, are trying to teach their kids about nature. You've got nature trails all over here that can be built and, and done. Uh, I commend Mr. Mr. Minor and, and Tuscaloosa Park and Recreation for this effort. So now, I have a couple of concerns besides the good ones that are bothering me. Mayor, your absence from the last two council meetings or to attend forums somewhere else is misleading. We pay your salary, so I hope from now on you attend our council meetings. Since the last council meeting, when I brought up some issues that appear to be conflicts of interest, I found out there are more issues going on than that. Mayor, do you know what section one oh nine of the coordinate ordinance says?
The last two meetings, the first one was a community prayer thing that I was invited to speak at. The second one was a conference call for my business. As Fed, first of all, are you in a roundabout way trying to accuse me of something, Jody?
No, I just ask you if you know what section one oh nine of conflicts of interest is. You can make your own determination after I get through.
Uh, not right offhand. I don't have.
Okay, I'm fixing to let you know then.
Okay.
Under no circumstance shall a preliminary plat- final plat- plans and profiles of improvements, preliminary master subdivision plans, project inspection, or other materials or labor necessary for compliance with these resolutions, be prepared, submitted, signed, attested to, carried out, or certified by a registered surveyor or registered professional engineer, or by a firm or corporation of partnerships engaged in business of engineering and land surveying if that individual firm, individual firm, corporation or partnerships is employed by, is an official of, is on contract or retainer to the city of Northport for the purpose of engineering and land survey. So, I've found that there could be a conflict of interest in a number of you, your firm, your partner, and, and plaits that you've done and presented to the city camp, to the city planning and zoning board. And I think you know who the words they are, but I've got a list if you'd like me to read it out so you can check and everybody else.
Well, right there, if you've got information, I encourage you to, to turn it into the ethics commission.
It's, it's already been done, sir.
That's fine. Then I have no further comments. I'll, I'll wait and talk to you.
I still have the floor. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Uh, here are two plaits, right here. Tuscaloosa Engineering, submitted to the Northport Planning and Zoning Commission where you, as a state notary public certified, and then send it in up here. Here's in addition to loads that your firms did and you signed at the back as being a professional land surveyor. It seems like it's a conflict of interest under that ordinance. Now, since that ordinance, I have right here twelve more pieces of information on same thing where, where, where the mayor's firm, partner, signed, designed, or submitted to the planning and zoning board. Now, I'm not, Mr. Davis knows I'm not a lawyer, as I've said it before. But to me, on that ordinance, you can spells out, if you're an official of the city and your firm is an engineering firm, you can't submit anything to the city, planning and zoning board. You have to remove yourself. But that hadn't been done. Now, I, I want to know is why is it still going on? Why, why are you, are they, and I know you, y'all can't answer it because mayor walked out. Why is the city attorney not brought this to your attention that this is going on? And informed you that it is a conflict. And the final thing is, uh, why is it continuing to happen and it's against the city's code? But I'm here tonight to request for this to be put in the minutes. A formal investigation from the Alabama Ethics Commission on this matter to see what's going on is acceptable or not. If it's going on, we need to stop it. If it's not, then we need to let, let the dead dog lie. But that, that's what I'm asking of this council because the next term is very important for the city of Northport. We, we have undergone the last two years, a change. You gentlemen, I, I take my hats off to you because you stood up for what you believed in in Northport. And I think you'll do it again, the ones that are back on the council, the ones that have served. I commend you for your service, but I do not want you to let down just because somebody, may be in a position. And by the way, according to city of Northport, the mayor appoints seven of the nine planning and zoning board members. So, if he appoints them and he presents in front of them, it's awful hard sometimes not to be true. But, but that's all I have and that's all I ask is let's just keep Northport honest, keep it growing, and thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Used up, you used up all your three minutes for the next time. Oh, uh, that's right. I did owe you two more minutes. You, you're right. I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm sorry. Um, we don't have any more citizens signed up to speak on item thirteen, public comment. We'll move right into mayor and council members' business. Uh, District one, the Honorable Councilwoman Judy Hayes, of course, is not here tonight. Um, I want to make sure we, we know that she has a prior engagement. She did call earlier today and, and, and mentioned that to me. Uh, under my business, I do want to, and I see Dennis in here, and Dennis, if you want to come up, I'll give you thirty seconds if you want to. I know you're filming me. So, if you want to come up, I know we got county high homecoming coming up. Absolutely.
Bring me your phone. I'll get you up close with.
Yeah, bring, yeah, bring, yeah, I can.
It'll look better from over here.
Yeah, it would. If you want to get on there, I can just.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
This coming Thursday, we have the homecoming parade that starts at six o'clock at the, um, Old County High School, the track where Northport Junior High was. It'll go through the same route downtown and, um, then from Friday morning, we have the alumni festival festivities, including an alumni breakfast for all alumni that want to come. It's free. We do, uh, have some finger food. We don't, you know, the whole bacon egg thing, but we do have some food to eat. And then we have our program where we present alumni of the year, the Hall of Fame and a couple of other awards. And we do a little program there too. Of course, then we have the football game that night, which, uh, I think our football team has actually improved. It, it couldn't get any worse as far as, uh, wins and losses. So we're on the right track and I just want they go Wildcats.
That's right.
Okay.
Class of seventy, where are you? What's class of seventy?
Seventy-two is also here.
Oh, wait a minute. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Thank you, Dennis. I'll also thank Gary Minor, of course. I mean, a great presentation, Gary. Your staff did a great job and thank Rodney for, uh, kind of spearheading it, and maybe doing some out of the box thinking with our parks and green spaces and what Northport, we could do in Northport, maybe the possibility, which is very exciting. So again, uh, it's very out of the box and I, I really enjoyed it. So Rodney, if you would, may get, get some dollar amounts with Gary and we can kind of.
You got it.
Yeah. Uh, that's all I have on to my business. Uh, Councilman Sullivan.
Just again, want to thank Gary and Sam and everybody at Para for what you do. Uh, certainly look forward to getting the ball rolling on several of these, uh, items. Also, uh, as you bring up the planning and zoning commission, uh, one of our members, Mr. Brian Wysock and his wife Anna welcomed a new baby girl this morning. Uh, they're all doing well. Certainly want to congratulate him and, uh, go ahead and let Mr. Stevens know that he'll probably be absent tomorrow. So, I know I got the email a minute ago, so count him out. Uh, but they're doing well. Certainly happy for them. Uh, and that is, that's all I have tonight.
Alright. District four, Councilman Sims.
Well, I was gonna say it's great to have Gary here tonight and, and having Sneed Fawcett here. Every city, you know, every city is lucky to have somebody that, that don't mind standing up for them. And they don't, they don't mind going to bat with anybody in town and, uh, certainly, Sam Fawcett has done that for Northport and for, and I think about our high school. It's, it's, it's kind of humbling to me to go up there to see where my daughter goes to school, to see Sam's name on it. But it means so much more to me because I know what Sam did to make that school happen. And those of us that, you know, we're, we're benefit, you know, here we, here it's been twenty-something years, uh, since that school or close to that, I guess. Uh, we're all reaping the benefits of what Sam chose to do with some of his time in retirement. with some of his time in retirement. And I guess what gets me is, everybody don't choose to help other people. They choose to spend their time simply. How can they make themselves, how can they make their own net worth go up versus how can I help my other people? Sam, I love you and appreciate you. That's all I got.
Thank you. You still want to be president for one meeting? I don't know legally if I can do that or not.
Now that I'm president, Sam, I've got a special role for you.
District 5, Councilman Harper.
I don't have anything. What can you say after that?
Yeah.
We'll just leave it at that. Everybody have a good evening.
Alright, the Honorable Mayor Bobby Herndon, of course, had to leave. So item 15 is adjournment. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meetings. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. All in favor, please say yes. All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.